Friday at noon is that pass the nation.
Are you on Kelly? Good evening, Washington courthouse, it is seven thirty P M. Time for our second regular meeting of the month. At this time, by the way, Mr. and Mrs. Kestor Key, our audience has gotten younger tonight.
And I'm so glad.
But anyway, yes, at this time, Mrs. Call's gonna offer the invocation, and Mr. Blair's gonna lead us in the pledge, so if you would stand up, we'd appreciate it.
Dear Holy Spirit, we are grateful for you and the guidance that you show us, and we are grateful to be brought together under this roof as we work towards making improvement in the city and doing your will as we work forward for the common good. We thank you for your guidance, and we implore you to continue blessing our endeavors. Amen.
Join me in the pledge, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Yes, Call, here. Christman.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Johnson. Shilts.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
I'm waiting. Somebody want to excuse?
Oh, I, I move that we excuse Mr. Johnson. I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Shilts.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. He may still come in, I'm not sure.
Yeah, never heard.
But anyway, we have the minutes from our regular meeting on April tenth, twenty twenty four. They were extensive because we passed a lot of legislation, but did anybody see any problems or corrections or anything?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
On page three, we did a third reading twice instead of passing. We did, but it's noted that we did it.
Passed.
That was on, on C, ordinance number five.
Did you see it?
Same thing on ordinance number six.
Got those, Kelly?
Yes, I do, thank you.
There was something else.
Oh, wait, there's something else?
Yeah, there was something else I read.
Thanks, Mr. Hall.
I don't know where it's at now, there was something circled it. All right, I'm gonna have to let it go because I don't, there was something else in there I saw. Anyway, okay.
With those corrections, does someone want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from ten, twenty twenty four. I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Shilts.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
We have Service Safety and Recreation, pretty green paper, Mr. Hawk, you're up, sir.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in council chambers located at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, April tenth, twenty twenty four, at six P M. And are presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Steve Shilts, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Gary Dean, service director, Mr. Tim Downing, fire chief, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Jeff Fenari, police chief, Mr. Mark Fistic, city attorney, and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a report by the fire department. Chief Downing reviewed options to resolve issues with the outdoor warning system. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with the storm sentry company. Number two, Chief Downing noted that fishing with a fire man will be held on April twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, at Washington Park. Number three, the administration noted that testing for the open firefighter position would be completed by the end of May. And before it, Chief Downing noted that he and Assistant Chief Langley would be attending the upcoming graduations of Mr. Nick Brannan and Mr. Tanner Ford from the Ohio Fire Academy that would be held on Friday, April twelfth, twenty twenty four. Number five, Chief Downing thanked members of the Hands of Christ Ministry, Mr. Rick Brown, code enforcement, and the service department for their help moving the fire training facility to accommodate the new Hands of Christ facility on Elm Street. Number six, the committee benefited from a report by the police department. Chief Fenari noted that the installation of mobile printers had been completed. Chief Fenari noted that the e-ticket process would be completed by the end of May. Chief Fenari noted that juvenile court tickets and parking tickets would remain as paper copies. Number seven, the committee discussed traffic concerns at Temple and North Main Street. The committee recommended that the administration review possible traffic calming strategies for the intersection, and that discussion continued. Number eight, the committee noted that a signage change will be implemented on Hyden Street by the post office. The administration noted new signs would limit no right turn on red to specific times and days. I misread that. It's on Hyden Street by the post office, not Hyden Street by the post office. Number nine, the committee benefited from a report on the status of various service projects within the community. The committee recommended that legislation be brought to council updating the stormwater sewer system, M S four permit regarding stormwater. The administration noted that storm sewer work could be completed on Market Street in preparation for the upcoming Market Street renovation project. Number eleven, the committee noted that the administration was exploring a small city grant through the Ohio Department of Transportation for Lewis Street. Number twelve, Mr. Gary Dean noted that the service department and collaboration with Mrs. Brigetta, High Sea of Soil and Water, are progressing on the twenty twenty four M S four project, creating a wildflower plot behind Washington Cemetery. Number thirteen, the administration advised the committee of excavation work on the trail. Number fourteen, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council regarding prohibiting upholstered furniture or like items manufactured for indoor use from being placed or used outside of a residence. Number fifteen, the administration noted that road work would be completed on Riverdale Drive by the Steel Master Company. Number sixteen, the administration advised the committee that water drainage issues near Christman Park were being reviewed, specifically the neighboring wooded lot that is holding water. Number seventeen, the administration noted concerns regarding disposal of grass and weed clippings in the street. The committee recommended that legislation be brought to council prohibiting the disposal of grass and weed clippings in streets or alleys. Number eighteen, Mr. Denon noted his appreciation of Mr. Zach Free and Mr. Quentin Matson of the water department. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawk, chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, and Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Wow, Ted, thanks. He does a long one.
Good job.
You deserve a raise.
Thank you.
Or a gift card to your favorite eating.
Well, I want to apologize, my denture keeps getting worse.
Your tongue, your tongue in front of your eye tooth, and you couldn't see what you were saying, and that was your trying to...
Okay. So, do you by have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I know it was a very long meeting, and Mr. Hawk only has so much gap power, but there was a couple things that Mrs. Call brought up at that meeting, the hemlock weed situation in the city, and also the gate at the splash pad. These are not on here, I was curious.
When, let me first talk about both of the issues. One, the hemlock thing, I emailed Brigetta, she's out, we did a little bit of research on her own, and most of that is in fairly close proximity to the creek, and what I imagine has occurred is where we mowed along the creek and cleared some more areas to make that a little bit more accessible, you've overturned some fairly bare earth, and that's where that stuff has sprung up. The problem with using a herbicide in that close proximity to the creek is that we need to be a little bit more selective in what you use, but what would appear to get rid of that would be if we kept it mowed and did not prevent that from reseeding for this year. So, that we'll keep an eye on, and then you have the gate for the splash pad, I reminded service that I wanted to see a different option for the closing of the gate, which I think is why we've got a couple people here. And when, at the end of the meeting, when council members make comments like that, sometimes it's a little bit hard to discern what is the individual members' comments at the end of the meeting and what the committee has collectively decided, but the, the hemlock issue, you know, that's fairly non-constru-, you know, nobody wants to encourage that, and closing the gate, or how you do the gate at the splash pad, you know, we'll try it a different way. Now, I will say, when it's shut, you can get some wound-up people talking to the service department because they think that, like, a group has reserved that shelter house and the splash pad, which is not the case, we don't let people do that, but hopefully with a little bit of getting used to, that there'll be some sort of mechanism that, that gate shut, that'll resolve that. Now, if what we come up with, if that doesn't work for folks, you know, they can talk to us and we can resolve that, but that's in the scale thing, it's kind of a small thing to, to deal with, really, we can take care of that pretty easy. The hemlock thing, unfortunately, you might have to suffer through that for a season.
Okay, well, anything else? No, just, the hemlock thing was got, I did some research on that once she brought it up, because part of the area where there is concern, I do walk to my grandhough every day, the cemetery and back in the dis golf course and that area, where I believe Miss Call said that was where she'd observed a lot of it.
Yeah, we were back there.
It is very toxic to animals, and...
Toxic to everything.
Yeah, so that was a kind of a concern on that, but I think that's...
Okay, did you have something, Mr. Shilts?
No, I was just going to approve the minutes.
I did note today, as I was coming around corner, that the sign at the post office is up.
Oh, it's up already?
That was fast.
Yeah, you're right on red chain, so yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, or, okay, now?
Okay, after all that discussion, I will move that we approve these minutes as granted. Take a second.
Roll call.
Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Shilts.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. Denon, you are up to bat, sir.
Thank you. Oh, I would like to express condolences to the family of Chief Fenari on their loss, and also the family of retired police chief Brian Honiger. Both of their fathers have passed away, and in both cases, both gentlemen were unusually close with their fathers, and it's just a shame. Unfortunately, I also have to express condolences to the family of Joe Langdon. Joe did a lot for the community in very kind and quiet ways, and that is also a loss that we will feel. Again, would like to reiterate, thanks for the folks in the tax department, they have done an exceptional job, you know, we've got some new people over there, and they have done, oh, we're just as pleased as we can be, and Roxanne is happy, which is sometimes a challenge, but they have caught on just exceptionally well, and we moved, oh, a tremendous number of people through there in a very efficient manner. Arbor Day, I'm sure everybody's gonna write this down in their calendar, it is the twenty sixth at noon at the Old Cemetery, and I'm sure that everyone will be there to support the tree committee, but they actually plant more than one tree this year out there, which will be very nice, and it'd be nice to have some shade there eventually again, also. Tonight, under new legislation, you have the grass in the roadway issue addressed, which we talked about before, basically prohibiting you from depositing grass clippings in the, in the street because of the aesthetic and the safety issue associated with that. And then ordinance twenty-two, twenty-four would be on first reading, which is dealing with the upholstered furniture outdoor issue, so some of us might have to change our exterior decor. You've got a couple of abatement issues, and then ordinance twenty-six is the solid waste management plan. The solid waste district periodically has to submit a plan to the state of Ohio, and they have to have the participation of the various political entities within the solid waste district. You also have ordinance twenty-seven, which updates the stormwater requirements of the city of Washington courthouse. There's nothing particularly unusual there, those are pretty standard set, and then we take those after you pass them, and we file those with the Ohio E P A. And then you've got, it seems odd this time of year, a resolution that allows us to continue to cooperatively purchase rock salt with the Ohio Department of Transportation, which is the cheapest, most efficient way for us to do that. Because we've had a mild winter, we'll place the, the minimum order, which off the top of my head, I think it's two hundred tons, because we have quite a bit of that in storage, actually, but you want to continue to participate in the program, see if you don't get kicked out.
Any questions for Mr. Denon?
Thank you.
Is our rock salt pile now the highest point in Fayette County?
It's the most salt we've ever had, I think, in the history of the city of Washington courthouse.
Thank you. Mr. Director of Finance, anything you want to tell the whole group tonight?
I just got a quick update there, we statement of cash, where we stand at the end of the month of March, beginning of this year, it's supposed to be the same, so we're maintaining steady. Reiterating what Joe said with the tax department, they outstanding job. The playground fund, we'll have the paperwork in tomorrow with the county to get that added to our stuff, and as far as that goes, with our investments, you know, we continue to monitor those and look for the best opportunities we have to get the return on investments. So, other than that, we're good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I don't have much to add, except to say we're low on grass.
And you will be for several months. Okay.
Thank you.
Next is local residents and taxpayers. Is Ms. Gosman, Jessica, you want to come up and talk to us, and please state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jessica Gosman, I live at twenty-one seventy-six Jenny Lane, Washington courthouse. I wanted to talk about the splash pad and the gate, and why it wasn't allowed to be shut. I didn't know if I was allowed to ask, I'm kind of new to the community, I used to be really involved in our old community, but we're just kind of getting settled in now. I'm a single mom of four neurodivergent children, and taking them all to the splash pad is a challenge by myself when I've got flight risks, and there's only one of me, and even if I'm looking with both eyes, I can only look in two directions. So, I heard earlier that it was a, there was a concern because people thought it was closed when the door was, or the gate was closed, is that why we aren't allowed to shut it?
No, they would assume that it was reserved like you can reserve a shelter house.
Okay.
Like you've reserved a little shelter house back there for like your own private party.
Birthday parties.
And we don't do that with the splash pad.
And that makes sense. So, would a plaque with maybe hours of operation stating that we don't, you guys don't allow the shelter house to be reserved, would that be a simple solution?
I mean, we are gonna change the look at what we can do with the latch down there to change that.
I appreciate that also.
You should put up more signage. Quite honestly, we got enough signage at that splash pad, if you read it all, you'd stand there for a half hour before you went inside the thing, but I mean, we can try signage that.
I just figure if that would tell people that it was in fact open and available for everyone, because last summer, we went to the splash pad and having the bathroom outside while my kids are inside, having to take them to the bathroom, it was very stressful, to say the least, and hopefully that's something that we can get fixed, because we really enjoy using that opportunity in our community, that's a wonderful thing to have here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had a good helper there, too, Ms. Gosman, you had a good helper. Next, and I'm having trouble, is it Sheena?
Sheena.
Sheena, would you come up? Sheena, I'm sorry.
Okay.
If you can state your name and address, please, and you brought company, it looks like.
Yes, because I don't do well talking in front of people. Okay, Sheena Husey, live at seven twenty-six Yeoman Street, Washington courthouse.
Dan Bishop, one thirty-two Eastview Road, Washington courthouse.
Okay, we're here, we're with the Scouts of Fayette County, we will be in August having an event, this is the third year for it, hopefully no rain, so pray to your gods, please. August twenty-fourth from eleven to three, it's called Far Far Away Day, it's Star Wars themed, we have the cosplayers, because I'm sure last year you probably saw Stormtroopers and Darth Vader and all that hanging out down here around the courthouse. It's put on by all the scouting units in the county, and we are here to request that we can shut down Main Street from Court to Market.
No, you go.
Yeah, you know what, you talk.
Yeah, but we're looking forward to requests to close the street, just this one block between Court Street and Market Street for the event. We will have, we've got so far, five different food vendors and seven craft vendors that will be attending, potentially in flux. Last year, we had several safety forces attend, police department had a crew serve, fire department sent one of their response vehicles, and Box sixty-five was here, Life Squad could not make it last year, but we'd like them to attend this year. Overall, got a whole page of notes if anyone has questions, but we have, we believe, two to three hundred people attend the event last year, we had Y M C A was present, Carnegie Library, some of the other civic groups around town. Again, as Sheena mentioned, it's sponsored by Scouts B S A. It is partially a recruiting event for us, but it's also a fun day for families, we have games and things all across the courthouse lawn, so we'd like to request the closure of the block, just for folks to be able to mill around within that block, and with several of the different events being on the street there that day, so...
I did this week talk to the business owners that are right here that it would affect, and they are all okay with it being shut down, and they are in complete total support of the Scouts, they've always done, so they always ask me for something we can do. Well, if you want to come and run the meeting, that's cool, so, you know.
Have notes I can pass out, if folks would like them, so...
Sure.
My printer is actually only printed white and white today, so consider that just...
We do have...
...license, perhaps.
Some of us remember Mr. Bishop when everything was black and white.
These paper days were all black and white, but before color printing, it was... So, it's very traumatic.
Yeah.
Toys for Tots, the Humane Agent, and Epsilon Top Pie, I hope I said that right, it's the Eagle Scout fraternity at the colleges. Yes, they're going to be there, they're actually gonna run a station for us. Toys for Tots are gonna set up to give out information, if anybody wants to donate a toy, they'll be able to do that during the event, and then, I have five hundred notes here. Yeah, yeah, there's two.
That's us in a nutshell, we're available to answer questions, but just for safety, we believe it's important to try to see if we can shut this, you know...
Yes, because you knock out little kids, they don't listen.
Also, we've, we've brought in the guests, police and fires, who have that at the edges, so if they would be called and need to leave, they will be able to egress quickly from the area.
I'm pretty sure, Mr. Denon, we can work that out.
Yeah, Dan, what time do you want it? Your event's eleven to three, right?
We want, I think...
We usually start setting up between eight and nine, because we'll be setting games and stuff up on the courthouse lawn, which we, the commissioner, commissioner have already approved that.
I believe we went and put up the wooden barriers, like after midnight sometime before people came in, so like six or seven A M., people might start trying to come for coffee and things, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, and we will have porta potties that'll be set up, to be set up in the alleys, so there will be facilities for everyone to use as well.
Part of that, we have security extra porta potties to serve publics.
We'll do it Friday night. When you are done and packed up, can you just put them, drag them to the side of the corner and...
Absolutely.
Yep, I did that last year, so...
Yep.
Yes.
You're good to go.
Sheena, if you're not liking to talk, you did great.
I talk a lot. I don't do well talking in front of people, I start blabbing a lot.
See, you got what you wanted, so there you go.
Thank you very much.
I would've had a sit-in if I didn't, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's great, okay. Tori, you are up, if you would say your name and address, please.
So, my name is Tori Rhodes, and my address is twenty-eighty-nine Dill Road, Bloomberg, Ohio, of course, it's Ohio, I get a little...
Of course it is. Where else would it be?
You know I've never been a good speaker. So, I'm here for the splash pad as well, I have a son who will be nine next month, and he is autistic, and he, when I first saw the splash pad open here in town, I was super excited to take him. I did not take him at all last year, and it's because of the gates. He is big on elopement, as you can see, I'm about five-two, this child comes to hero me. That's, that's a lot for me to, you know, grab up, and then I worry about vehicles coming by, or just any of that, you know, I only have him, so it does make it a little easier, but you know, the same thing with the gate just being open, it, it does make it difficult, especially if I try to bring stuff with us to ensure that he has everything he needs, and I'm leaving my stuff unprotected while I'm obviously going to go after my child. It's just a risk, it's, it's a huge risk, and I just wasn't comfortable with it, so we did not get to enjoy the splash pad last year. When I heard about this, I thought, oh, that's my opportunity to try to, you know, help my child among other people in our community, because I know a lot of people really like the splash pad. So, I kind of had the same ideas as Jessie, just thought about like a sign, and even maybe some social media networking, like putting it out there, like allowing parents to know, hey, you know, like he said, this is never closed for events, it's always open, and just having something on that gate that us parents can kind of open and close. And kind of from a crime standpoint, too, I also got to thinking, it's a good resource to have it closed, because I know the community is great, and we don't like to think about it, but it takes two seconds to snatch a child, and I, I mean, I'm a hover over my child, but it takes one second for me to look away and somebody snatch him. My child is nonverbal, he is not gonna yell, so, that's all I have.
That's great. That's great. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you. And last, Sean. Sean, will you again state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Sean Groves. My address is one-one-three South Main Street. Um, I am also here to talk about the splash pad. I know we've heard a lot about it. I more so just want to give reasons as to why we should be closing the uh, gate. Um, my nephew, who is, I believe, three or four, thank you Sylvia, um, is very big on elopement. We actually had a wedding not too long ago where we were at a golf course and the gate was open. He was able to easily get away from us even with eyes on him, just because, you know, we were in the middle of the wedding and he got up, walked away, and got down into a ditch in Wilmington and was very close to the street. The splash pad is no different. It is right by a main road, uh, that people travel quite a bit. Um, and we just wanna make sure that the kids are staying in with their parents. And I know there's been plenty of statements made that parents just need to watch their kids. Sometimes that is the answer, sometimes it just isn't. Kids can get away. It is super easy for them to get away. So we just wanna make sure our kids are staying safe in uh, the community.
Sean, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay.
Workout cut out for us to figure out a deal with that gate.
We can do that. Anyway, we're ready for legislation previously introduced. And first would be ordinance number twenty twenty twenty-four, third reading.
I'll move that we place ordinance number twenty twenty twenty-four on third reading.
I will second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Call, yes. Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Schultz. Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty dash two thousand twenty-four, and ordinance amending codified ordinance thirty-three per sixteen, age requirement for original appointments.
Move for passage.
Second.
Roll call.
Call, yes. Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Sounds like an echo, Kelly. You say roll call, you say call.
Call.
All right, new legislation. Ordinance number twenty-one twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I'll move we put ordinance twenty-one twenty twenty-four on first reading. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Call, yes. Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance prohibiting the disposal of grass and weed clippings in the street, roadway, and alleys of the city of Washington Courthouse.
Ordinance number twenty-two twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I'll move that we place ordinance number twenty-two twenty twenty-four on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Yes, I have a quick question for Mr. Pistick. A lot of people put old sofas and what have you out, hoping somebody will come along and pick them up. Usually their trash man, I don't think does. Is there any way we could furnish that service at a nominal charge? Without having to pick up a whole yard full of trash, but sofas or chairs or?
Let me say that if it sits out there very long, we will, we will probably have somebody pick it up. We'll placard the property first. So the question is, I guess, what do you wanna do? Uh, who do you wanna charge? And if this is a tenant, for instance, in the house, uh, puts the uh, council in the alley or out in front and no one goes, he doesn't have it picked up, do you charge the tenant or do you charge the homeowner? We, the only one, the only person that we have is to charge the homeowner, the person who owns the property.
Yeah, well, we passed that several years ago. If the trash didn't get picked up, the homeowner, the landlord pays for it.
And that's what would happen.
And they raise half to it, maybe, because I brought it up, but who else will pay for it? I thought maybe a nominal fee for us picking it up, if it might be cheaper for them as opposed to a fine if they went to court.
If, if that's what council would like.
Well, I'm just running out there.
We'd have to work through the.
You need some incentive, cause you know, they're, they don't put it out there with the intention of doing anything with it. They're hoping somebody else is willing to get it.
Right. Right. We'll be happy to do whatever you'd like to do.
I, I guess the other question along with Jim's question would be, when it's put out there, if they wait for someone to come along and pick it up, how long will we let it sit there before we placard the, the property?
It won't be long.
Twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours, so. Cause if you don't, it's gonna be there three weeks anyway.
Right, and then it's soaking and.
Forty-eight hours. Rain gets heavy, nobody can pick it up.
The question, the question we have is, I'd have to work with Mr. Denna to figure out exactly, from a procedural perspective, how we wanna handle it.
I, I would say the property owner who should get billed for it.
It's fine.
Cause if it is, it's his property, his responsibility, regardless whether the tenant put it there or not.
But we pretty much do that.
Yeah, okay.
Same thing now with trash and other.
So I'd say we're here, we stay in that same, same avenue with that same procedure. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Pistick. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I know you and Mr. Denna will get it.
We'll get it figured out.
Uh, roll call, Kelly.
Call, yes. Chrisman. Hawk.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance prohibiting the storage, collection, parking, leaving, depositing, maintaining, reserving, putting aside for further use, permitting or allowing to remain on any porch, balcony, roof, patio, or yard other than in a completely enclosed building or structure. Certain materials, including but not limited to junk, rubbish, clutter, litter, debris, lumber, and building materials, and upholstered furniture, mattresses, mattresses material, and other similar products not normally intended, designed, built, or manufactured for outside use or upon any property situated within the city of Washington Courthouse.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-three twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I'll move we put ordinance twenty-three twenty twenty-four on first reading.
Second.
Oh, there was another one, too. Um, where are we? Oh, discussion? Roll call.
Call, yes. Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance authorizing Joseph J. Dinnan, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, or his designee, to abate public nuisance at eleven twenty-six East Temple Street. Authorizing a private contract for the payment of the abatement of nuisance, and directing the collecting of the cost of the abatement of nuisance from the owner of the property.
Ordinance number twenty-four twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I'll move that we place ordinance number twenty-four twenty twenty-four on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Call, yes. Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance authorizing Joseph J. Dinnan, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, or his designee, to abate public nuisance at twelve twenty-six East Paint Street. Authorizing a private contract for the payment of the abatement of nuisance, and directing the collecting of the cost of the abatement of nuisance from the owner of the property.
Ordinance number twenty-five twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I'll move we put ordinance twenty-five twenty twenty-four on first reading. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Call, yes. Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance authorizing Joseph J. Dinnan, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, or his designee, to abate public nuisance at seven oh eight Campbell Street. Authorizing a private contract for the payment of the abatement of nuisance, and directing the collecting of the cost of the abatement of nuisance from the owner of the property.
Ordinance number twenty-six twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I'll move we place ordinance number twenty-six twenty twenty-four on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Call, yes. Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-six dash two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance in the matter of the approval of the solid waste management plan for the Ross, Pickaway, Highland, Fayette, Joint Solid Waste Management District.
Ordinance number twenty-seven twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I'll move we put ordinance twenty-seven twenty twenty-four on first reading. Second.
Discussion.
This is a useful thing to have is collection of wat- storm water and so on. And one that really works well is the one at thirty-eight and Dennis Street, up there by the railroad tracks. That thing collects a lot of water from a whole group of homes, and it's, I think part of the, the storm lines underneath are part of the collection part. But that pond stays full for a while and goes down gradually, which is the whole idea of collecting water like that, so it doesn't flood the streams all of a sudden, and that one really works well, so. If we didn't have, we have that all over town, we're really kicking the Scioto River, you know, Ohio River from flooding so much. Doing our part for the state.
Good. Any other discussion? Roll call, Kelly.
Call, yes. Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Sorry, Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-seven dash two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance adopting by reference a municipal separate stormwater sewer system, illicit discharge detection and elimination plan.
Before we do the last one I just mentioned, for people who might be here the first time, when you hear the word ordinance, we have to vote on it three different meetings. And when you hear the word resolution, which we're getting ready to do, it's only two meetings. So the next bit of legislation is uh, resolution number R twenty twenty twenty-four, first reading.
And I'll move we put resolution R twenty twenty-four on first reading.
Second.
Discussion.
I just wondered how much we're paying for a ten or so.
Uh, Ted, I was relatively cheap compared to years past, but I can't remember the price I thought I had. It's cheaper than it's been in a long time. I remember that. But I can't remember the per time price I thought I had right now.
You wanna buy something? Well, anything else? Roll call, Kelly.
Call, yes. Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Dinnan, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the purchase of Both Highway Rock Salt.
Thank you, Kelly. I know your throat's not all that good. Uh, okay, Mrs. Blair's down there all by himself. Do you go first?
All right, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple things, uh, as most of you have already expressed, I walk the grand dog every day. Back by the uh, disc golf course. I think the disc golf course is one of our best kept secrets. There are a lot of people, and I've noticed today, they're from Highland, Scioto County. So the word is kinda out there, but I think uh, they're doing a good job trying to keep it mowed, considering all this rain. It's a very swampy area. But I wanna commend those that uh, you know, are keeping it up. I think it's Sunday, when I was walking, and somebody was mowing with the mower. I don't know if it was uh, how he got the mower there, but he was out there mowing almost all afternoon, and it really does look nice. Uh, so, I don't know, is that's on, maybe on our website? We could put that on our website, so when people look at the city, they can see, hey, they got an eighteen hole golf, uh, audio, a disc golf course out there. But uh, and also the cemetery, they're doing a fantastic job. It really is nice. And uh, I wanna commend the cemetery crew and the work they're doing. And uh, thank you all for coming and expressing your concerns tonight. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Jim. And Steve?
Well, along the same lines, things around the city, first of all, we will definitely look into that gate over there at the splash pad. That's interesting. So we could do with that, and I wish you guys luck with it. Boy Scouts, I was a Boy Scout one time, so I know what you're going through, so. We always did those little programs. The things around the city I'd like to see get done this year is, I think we were, we talked about the ponds. The second pond, getting the stones around it, does that still?
We never intended to go all the way around that.
It's not gonna go all the way around.
No. If you did that, you would do that in the front section, and you would have a progression where it becomes increasingly more natural as opposed to.
What you did in the front.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's okay, as long as it kinda gives it a, dress it up a little bit.
Yeah.
When I was getting at, so. And the other thing I was talking about is the uh, the trails. How we uh, I understand we're gonna be laying some lap top for the trails in the city, not outside the city, in the city, to finish up the trails in the city.
Oh, if you look, we put down fairly recently a fair amount of base. It's, oh, a good place to look would be right across the street from uh, Cherry Hill School. No, that's progressing well very well.
Okay, good. So we'll get those done in the city. Now, we're not talking about outside the city. The other thing I was looking, I should've brought that up with Chelsea, is the uh, try to put some monies together. We could paint some of these buildings downtown. The front part, not the whole building, just the front part that faces the street. There's two or three buildings I know of, the owners I've spoke to, that would like to have it painted. They just don't have the money to do it. So if we could work out some kind of program to come up with that, uh, that type of thing. I don't know where we'd get the money from just yet, but maybe something we can work on for the future and get some of these paint, buildings painted downtown. Occupied buildings, the empty buildings. What we can do about the empty buildings. But those are the few of the things I would like to see we continue to work on and get done in twenty twenty-four. The pond, the, the trails, and the painting of the buildings downtown, some of them. So these are things we need to keep working towards to beautify the city, give the city a little different look. I would love for Washington Courthouse someday to have the, get in one of those uh, books or somewhere that says a destination to go to, someplace to go to, to visit Washington Courthouse. So, and if we do that, we need to brighten it up a little bit, get the trails done, give it a nice look. And I think we've been working towards that the last several years. We'll continue working towards that, so. But also, thank everybody for coming. We do appreciate, appreciate your comments. We do appreciate that, so thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Sean, I'll let you speak. You can take my place here in a minute. I assume you wanna say something about the trail.
Oh, that's Sean. I was like.
That's Sean. Yeah, you raised your hand, so I assume.
No, 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 I was like, go on, yay.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, good.
Dale, can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
If, when we put down asphalt, if it appears to be illogical and start a stop-start, don't, don't get too worried about that. Some of that is the contractor and the size paper and weather commitments that they, they've got. That, that, that anything to worry about. So if we do some things that appear to be illogical, just, just relax, it'll be fine.
Sylvia, what have you got?
All right, well, we are rounding out the end of Autism Acceptance Month, and to not sound like a broken record, I'm gonna sound like a broken record and talk about autism, cause that is kind of my world, and that's what I do at home, and that's what I do at work. But I think our community has come a long way. Um, we now have, through the ADEP program, through Fayette County Board of D D, we have evaluated um, in the age, number of kiddos for autism spectrum disorder, and a lot of those kiddos have received a positive diagnosis and receive ongoing therapies and support, um, and I think that's phenomenal. The alternative before we began that program was, they were on a waitlist for up to two years at Nationwide Children's. Our, our average time between Dr. Fitton and myself is two months. So that's definitely improved, and they're getting the therapies that they need. I'm excited about the, the possibility of this including playgrounds that's gonna be targeted for some of our kiddos who um, have accessibility issues. So I think that's a positive change. Um, I think the dynamic and the conversation around the splash pad and just different things like that, that the community has been open about, and council and city manager has. has been open about, and council and city manager has been open and receptive to hear is phenomenal. And so I'm just super grateful, and I think it's been a pretty darn good Autism Acceptance Month, so I'll take it. That's all I've got.
Mr. Hawk?
Here's two things. I wanted to compliment Mr. Bishop on his wife, who we've been talking about a lot tonight. She's been a really good asset for the tax department, and appreciate that. And I was, I was a scout at one time, not officially. I, I was, I grew up on earth, and I was at a, at a boarding school, and we pretended to be Boy Scouts. We had a manual and everything, and. Dorm parents took us on the five mile hike, and I was assigned to the tools for the latrine, and we stayed overnight. Uh, we got there, and different ones were assigned to take things, and I had the shovels and so on. And, of course, that helped to gather up the, we used cow pies at the entrance of our tent for the mosquitoes. We lit them and that, the smoke kept them away, but, but the thing, the, the person that was supposed to take the meat forgot the pots. So, uh, but I was the hero, because I had a shovel, and we cooked on my shovel. So anyway, that was part of my experience as a Boy Scout, so.
Must have a phenomenal system.
That's a different idea, sir.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
Are you sure you want him leading this?
Jim, I feel for you, though.
I guess since I'm last, I have to follow.
I don't know what you're going to do.
Well, sometimes it's Sylvia, so I spread it around. He gets to.
Yeah, I appreciate that once in a while.
Thanks for taking one, Jim.
Yeah, take it for. Anyway, thanks, everybody, for coming, all your information, we hope we helped you out, and hope you enjoyed the meeting. Come back and see us. It's always interesting. Always.
It's always interesting.
We try our best, and if we're not doing the best, tell us. That's all I have. Thanks for coming. Have a good evening.
And I'll just say for you, Sean, that I, we're glad that's getting done, and it's going to be nice.